All right, I want to call this meeting of September 2nd, 2014, North City Council order. All please call the vote.
Mr. Ratt?
Here.
Mr. Roletta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bugg?
Here.
Mr. Cos?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
And Mr. Marby?
Here.
We have nine present this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we come before you as humble servants. Bless us in our deliberations. Be with those who are in need. Help those who are facing adversity. Be with the family of Caris, Marley, Cosmer. Two-year-old recently diagnosed with leukemia and granddaughter of our fellow councilman, Mark Mathrie. We ask your presence with all. Be with those who face death at the hands of their enemies and bring us peace. And we pray in your name. Amen.
Our pledge is that we lie in the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Mr. Johnson. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. Do you have anything? Mrs. Floyd?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Guthrie.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Marby. On favor, see if I would say aye. Aye. Or same sign.
I just think everybody can tell from the prayer. Mark, they found out over the weekend his two-year-old granddaughter has leukemia. She's in Children's Hospital and they are working on a bone marrow biopsy right now. So he would just like you to have her in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next, we have the minutes of our August 18th, 2014 meeting. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ratt, second by Mr. Johnson. All is in favor, see if I would say aye. Aye. Or same sign. Thank you. That passes. We have three reports of standing committees this evening. One from Finance, one from Service, and one from Capital Improvement. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We also have one report from city officials this evening from Barbara Jobbs, the city tax administrator, also without objection, and that will be received and filed. Next on the agenda, we have Communications. First this evening, we'd like to recognize Mayor Hall to present a proclamation for Hunger Action Month and for the Licking County River Roundup Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Hunger Action Month, and surely to promote the awareness, I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern across the United States, more than a half a million individuals in Ohio alone rely on food provided by the Mid-Ohio Food Bank annually. In Licking County, thirteen and a half percent of citizens deal with food insecurity on a daily basis. The Mid-Ohio Food Bank works with grocers, food companies, Ohio farmers, the USDA, and community partners to obtain food and distribute it to more than 550 food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, after-school programs, and senior housing sites across Central and Eastern Ohio. The Mid-Ohio Food Bank continually focuses on educating communities about the importance of food banks and the much-needed resources to continue the efforts to combat hunger. Food banks across the state, including Mid-Ohio Food Bank, will promote numerous events throughout the month of September to encourage citizens to get involved in the efforts within hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I, Jeff Hall, Mayor of the City of Newark, do hereby proclaim September 2014 as Hunger Action Month in Newark, Ohio. Thank you. And we also, this weekend is a River Roundup, which is a great event that cleans up the rivers. I'd like Denise Montalvo-Brooks to join me up front here. Denise is the acting District Program Administrator for Licking County Soil and Water Conservation District, and she's also the Environmental Education Specialist. Each year, they do a wonderful job in spearheading, along with many volunteers, to clean up our licking rivers and lines through our city here. Whereas it is with great pride that we celebrate the 20th Licking County River Roundup on Saturday, September 6th, 2014. This is an opportunity for us to create awareness about clean water in Licking County. We hope to energize our community by holding a hands-on cleanup of our waterways through the entire Licking County. Over the years, this extremely effective roundup has gained great momentum. In 2013 alone, 175 volunteers turned out to pull over 270 tires and about 10 cubic yards of trash out of county waterways and surrounding riverbanks. The committee representing Licking County Soil and Water Conservation District, Licking County Recycling, Licking County Health Department, City of Newark Stormwater Utility, and City of Newark Water Department pledged to work together with the communities of Licking County to provide assistance in the cleanup. With the Licking County River Roundup, we want to get everyone involved in the community, from families and organizations to public officials and senior citizens, working together to keep our water clean. Now therefore, I, Jeff Hall, Mayor of the City of Newark, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 6th, 2014, as Licking County River Roundup Day in Newark, Ohio, and encourage our citizens to get involved in preserving our natural resources and to be conscientious of the future of our environment. So.
Go ahead. Would you like to make a comment? You can, if you'd like.
Stand up to the left one right there, please.
That way we can get you on tape.
I find it interesting that we have a proclamation for hunger awareness this month and for clean water. Because without clean water, we wouldn't have the food to feed people, all of us, that everyone in need. So it occurred to me as I was listening to the proclamation, but I think that's something for all of us to be mindful of. As of right now, there are over 200 volunteers registered for River Roundup. We have more cleanup locations throughout the county than ever before, and Newark is one of the biggest cleanup areas. So from north of Everett Park all the way through Black Hand Gorge is a continuous section of river getting cleaned up. I anticipate us having even more trash pulled out of the river this year because our community supports this initiative, and I encourage everyone here to be part of the cleanup. Jeremy Blake has the gold star today because he is the person sitting here that is already registered for the River Roundup. If you have questions about it, you can talk to him because he joined us last week to see what we're actually doing on the rivers. When September 6th comes, this Saturday, keep your fingers crossed for good weather. Thank you, Eric.
I may wish to add, it starts at Everett Park, or a big part of it's at Everett Park. It's by that many ways. I do want to recognize Jim Kirkoff, too, who headed up Soil and Water Conservation for over 17 years here in the county. Appreciate him. I assume you brought your wife with you, Jim?
I did.
This evening, and she has a nice list for you to work on.
Very good. Thank you very much.
And what would the times on that be? I could ask Mr. Blake since he has the gold star.
The duration goes from eight to nine at multiple locations throughout the county. Our location for Newark is Everett Park. But I will leave information here for anybody interested in the event. But I think it's really going to be honestly the biggest cleanup we've done on this 20th anniversary. So very excited.
Thank you, Denise.
Thanks, everyone.
Also under Communications, we have three other communications this evening. One from the Ohio Department of Fundamental Disability, one from Daniel Crawford, and one from Paul Murray. Those will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda tonight, we have comments from citizens. There are two places you can comment. One is now before the legislation, and one is after. Again, this is not a debate with the council, but just to get some opportunity for you to come up and let us hear your comment.
My name is Mike Butcher, 1263 Union Street, Newark, Ohio. Has one comment I'd like to make. I usually go past West Main Street every day, turn to work hours, and then there's that empty parking lot. Been there for a long time, and I'd like to know what's going to be happening to that parking lot. Been sitting there, been there, nothing there. And I just moved to Union Street to Jeremy's territory.
Okay.
Thank you. And there's one thing, there's one thing I do, there's one thing I'd say as an old fashioned type person, I'd say old furniture lights or something from my new apartment that was fancy, and I'll take my lifeblood Melissa White. Do you have children or grandchildren to talk about?
Hello, my name is Melissa Martin, and I work with Spark LLC in Grandville. So I work with William, and we're good friends, sort of a natural support for him. I think what he's trying to get at with the emergency light thing is recently William had to move from his apartment, not because of his own doing, but because his building was infested with riches, and it was an unhealthy environment for William to live in. So therefore, William had to give up a lot of positions that were very important to him. Right, William?
Right.
It was a very difficult time for him, you know? So he's moved now. Very nice place to live, very clean, a lot of churches, you know, came to the plate and volunteered furniture and stuff for William, but those personal things are hard to replace. And he had emergency lights in his living room, from, I don't know where he got them from, but I think that's what he's looking for, is to see if he can come up with those emergency lights, you know? And they're old ones, they're not like new ones though.
That's why I'm an old-fashioned person, and that's what I'd say could help me, numerous of old furniture lights from both police crews or something like that, old cat lights, I'd be more happier decorating my apartment.
So he has a very high admiration for law enforcement, so if you know of anyone who'd like to donate them, he would truly appreciate it. All right, William?
And my top of the task forecast, took the bus to clear tonight, took the bus to clear tonight, 65 tomorrow, I'd bid up to 80, I can think, I can't really, I think the bus to Super Bowl tomorrow, I thought, you know, 85. I will get to 78, top of the task forecast, I'll try to one kill one term by once I watch Tubbs and Dudes.
I hope you can get that done, that'd be good. Anyone else this evening for the first section of citizens' comments?
Just a quick thing here, Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. First, I wanted to say about Mark's granddaughter, that just breaks my heart, you know, cancer is evil disease, and I just can't say nothing about it. But about Hunger Awareness Month, I appreciate the mayor for bringing that up, and I would like to encourage the mayor to take up on the food stamp challenge that's been taken up by mayors across the country, just to help within the spirit of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Anyone else in this first section? Okay, we'll move on to ordinances on the first reading, 14-23.
Orders 14-23 by Mr. Blake and Mr. Cos. It's an ordinance providing for the issuance of not-to-recede $8.1 million of various purpose refunding funds and declaring an emergency.
This is an emergency, so it only has one reading. You've heard the reading of 14-23. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
I'll move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Cos. Is there any discussion on 14-23? Seeing none, all please call the vote.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Mrs. Floyd? Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
14-23 passes eight to one. Next, we have 14-24.
Orders 14-24 by Mr. Blake and Mr. Cos. It's an ordinance of declaration of official intent with respect to reimbursement of temporary advances made from capital expenditures to be made from subsequent borrowings and declaring an emergency.
Once again, this is an emergency. You've heard the reading of 14-24. What does you wish?
Mr. President, Blake? Move to adopt. 14-24.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-24? Seeing none, all please call the vote.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
14-24 passes nine zero. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 14-63.
Resolution 14-63 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marby, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt. A resolution appropriating and disapproaching monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Mr. President, you've heard the first reading, Mr. Blake?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, the second reading. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You've heard the second reading of 14-563. Let's try it again. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt 14-24.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Marby. Is there any discussion on 14-63? Seeing none, all please call the vote.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
14-63 passes nine zero. Next, on the second reading, we have 14-64.
Resolution 14-64 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marby, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt. It's a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Heard the second reading of 14-64. What does you wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Blake? I'll move to adopt 14-64.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-64? Seeing none, all please call the vote.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
14-64 passes nine zero. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 14-68.
Resolution 14-68 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marby. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
14-68, Mr. Blake?
I'll move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake, what's the reason for that?
Mr. Williams explained to the committee that they want to get these reimbursements back to the appropriate people as soon as possible.
All please call the vote. The two-day reading rule on 14-68?
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt 14-68.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-68? Seeing none, all please call the vote.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
14-68 passes nine zero. Next, we have 14-69.
Resolution 14-69 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marby, Mr. Cos. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to accept bids and sell certain surplus personal property now owned by the City of North Ohio and declaring that such property is no longer needed for any municipal purpose.
14-69 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-70.
Resolution 14-70 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marby, Mr. Cos. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
14-70 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-72.
Resolution 14-72 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marby, Mr. Cos. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the City of North Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for construction of the downtown renovation project.
15-72 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-73.
Resolution 14-73 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Marby, Mr. Cos. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of North to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for fiscal year 2014 Edward Burnt Justice Assistant Grant Funding.
14-73 will be held for a second reading. Finally, we have 14-74.
Resolution 14-74 by Mr. Marby, Mr. Cos, and Mr. Blake. A resolution authorizing the director of public service to prepare and submit applications to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvements Program and to execute contracts as required.
14-74 will be held for a second reading. And that concludes our legislative session this evening. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our second section of comments from citizens. Do you have anyone? One of you got it. Either one.
Sorry for the confusion. Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. If it seems like a call for impeachment is a radical move, that's because it's supposed to be. The founding fathers inserted this power as a means of last resort to safeguard the rule of law and to ascertain that the people, via Congress, would be unable to keep tyranny at bay. Moreover, I realize how I look to be at this again, begging for city council to act on behalf of Newark citizens and asking our congressman to do what his oath of office commands him to do. Think what you will of me, but my concerns are not with my reputation, as I am more than happy to risk appearing crazy for the sake of defending Newark. Rather, I concern myself with the health of our republic and the real threat posed against such by permitting the presidency to expand its authority within Putin. Consider for a moment the example of President Obama's decision to order the execution of an American citizen without due process in 2011. Admiral Al-Awlaki, who was suspected of terrorist behavior, was deemed an enemy of the state and targeted primarily because of his perceived influence in the terrorist realm. While an argument could certainly be made that he posed a threat to Americans both at home and abroad, the fact of the matter is that terrorism is a crime for which suspects have been convicted and imprisoned before. Was the drone strike that killed him necessary? Did it ultimately make a difference in the broader campaign against terrorism? Is there now somehow less of an appetite among terrorists to terrorize the innocent in the wake of this American's death? At what point did terrorism become a criminal act exempted from constitutional protections of due process? If this precedent empowering a president to become a unitary judge, jury, and executioner of Americans suspected of terrorism is permitted to stand, then what's to stop any future president from applying this perceived authority and carrying out drone strikes against domestic terrorists like the Timothy McVeighs of tomorrow? Contemplate for a moment just how vague and relative the definition of a terrorist is and weigh in whether you are truly comfortable with any president having this power at his or her disposal. Now, as submitted to you exclusively via email two weeks ago, I now re-sent that tonight my slightly edited suggestion for a resolution that could be adopted by city council or forwarded to the ballot for the citizens of North to consider. A resolution demanding congressional action to restore the balance of power and to uphold the rule of law. Whereas presidential powers have been expanded beyond the scope designed and intended by the founding fathers since the tenure of President Franklin D. Roosevelt, this expansion of powers has involved the usurpation of congressional authority and responsibility to modify the law, as well as gradually undercutting Congress's role in declaring war or authorizing military action. Moreover, the presidency has become an office which presents itself as being above the law, particularly where the rights of citizens suspected of wrongdoing is concerned. Be it resolved that the city of North Ohio recognizing that democracy cannot survive with political power is permitted to be centralized and concentrated to the hands of one person, demands that our representatives in both houses of the United States Congress take immediate action, up to and including impeachment and removal if need be, to restore the balance of power and to uphold the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
David Green, 1791 Olympic Court in Newark. I just wanted to let the council know that on the 20th of September at the Newark Public Library, there will be a town meeting, issues and answers with candidates for the county commission, and you're all welcome. It's still clock in the afternoon on Saturday, the 20th. Last year, we had a very, I think, very positive discussion that included a number of council people related to the city council elections that were coming up, and so people feel very strongly that the county commission candidates should be addressing issues of concern from the community. So you're all welcome to come.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone else? Anyone from the administration this evening? Our Stephen Oliver, Mr. Johnson?
Meeting of flow belongs to the smooth like I don't want to disrupt the club, so.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our Arnold Lawrence Assassin?
I'm not normally one to refrain from disrupting the flow, but I will tonight. I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Assassin. Mayor Hall?
I will also pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ratt?
Thank you. For those of you who saw all the ALOS challenges online, if you saw mine, I've got a friend of mine that I promised I would do this to, with the announcement of Mark's great daughter and the diagnosis of leukemia, it's even more apropos. September is National Children's Cancer Research Awareness Month. 728 kids are diagnosed daily with cancer. 250 die daily from children's cancer. Yet less than five percent, less than five cents of every dollar raised for cancer research goes towards children's cancer. I just want everybody to realize that and try to help make September a great, great month for children's cancer research. Then I'll pass.
The draft, Mr. Roletta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sad to say that we recently lost a truly great member of our community, Dr. Carey Rader. He devoted his time and his energy to helping others and to causes that he felt would make our community and our world a better place to live in, and he'll be missed by many, many people. Thank you, Mr. Rader.
Thank you, Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to announce that in the south end, we have a new pizza shop that's open, so Bruski's Pizza, and so they're extending their business from just the drive-through to also now offering subs and salads and pizzas. And as we know, the diversity of our small businesses in our community is going to be for our future, for employment and other opportunities. So I want to encourage anyone that you want to move for Bruski's. I got some here, and they got good pizza. I had a salad and a sub the other day from them, so I encourage you to go to Bruski's and try that out. Also want to, you know, thank, thanks to those folks with the River Roundup. I did go in that preview they had last week, and, you know, I think it ducked it to the river or anything. Joe Williamson dumped me, but I thank him for that. But it was a fun time, and I do hope that everyone gets out and volunteers this Saturday. It's a great opportunity to encourage people to get involved, and we want people to volunteer their time to make a difference, and I think that's a great opportunity to do that, so I'll be there Saturday with you, and hopefully bring some more people out. So I'll be there Saturday with you, and hopefully bring some more people out. I'll call for Finance Committee meeting, and that'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. If you're not into beach and lace, and you go order pizza, the first pizza's on Mr. Blake, so... Mr. Blake? Thank you, Mr. Roletta. Mr. Cost?
I'd like to thank everyone that was involved in the organization of the Maverick Gate Parade. There's a lot of, a lot of hard work put into that, and I thought it was a nice event.[1613.88]